Welcome, everybody, to the November 17th City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. Appreciate everybody being here. We will start the agenda tonight with the minutes of the meeting for October. If I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this next agenda item is an opportunity for you to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you just wanted to present something to the commission that's not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and we'll listen to that. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Catherine?
No announcements, sir.
All right, no announcements, all right. Are there any items that we need to place on the non-agenda? Any non-agenda items we need to place on the voting agenda tonight?
There was a request, but if the applicant's not here to request it specifically...
...with the parks companies and we're requesting that we have an extension for the for a site plan approval for a storage building that we have planned at our office and it would be City of Franklin Project Number 1998. We extended one time through administrative extensions and now we would like to get it extended for six more months. We're filing our building permit application tomorrow.
All right. Any comments from staff on this before we decide whether to hear it or not? All right, our vote then will be whether or not we want to hear this tonight or not and we need a full vote from everyone. It'll have to be, what's the term?
Unanimous.
Unanimous? Getting too close to Christmas already. Unanimous vote, so I guess, do I need a motion first? It's been a long time since I've done a non-agenda item.
Motion for approval.
Okay?
Second.
Moving to seconded.
It's just to hear it, I think.
Yeah, this is just to hear.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Add it to the agenda.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So you will be item number 45. Thank you, sir. All right, any others?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have you introduce Jimmy Franks, our new Plan Commission member, who is joining us for the first time this evening.
Let me introduce Mr. Jimmy Franks, who is joining us. He is the newest member on our Planning Commission. We welcome you, Jimmy, and look forward to your serving with us.
I'm honored. Thank you very much.
And I know it'll be a great time and look forward to hearing your thoughts.
Thank you very much.
All right, anything else? Okay, then we will move on to the consent. We'll start with the initial consent agenda right now, which is items seven through 24, 26 through 32, 39 through 44. Anyone on the staff or in the audience that wants to pull an item from this agenda? Anybody on the commission that wants to pull items? No? All right, then do I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Moving to seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, now the secondary consent, and I'm going to, because I'm involved in several of these items, I'm going to accuse myself, but Roger, one thing I should have mentioned to you, we want to pull item 38, please, from the agenda, from the consent, and we're going to move that to right behind item 35.
Move behind 35.
We'll vote on that next.
38.
Move to 36.
Will it still be a consent item?
After this vote, there'll be, what's after secondary, a thirdary consent.
That'd be not consent.
Tertiary consent.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman, the items for the secondary consent list for tonight are items number 25 and numbers 33 through 35. Is that correct? Does anyone wish to pull one of these items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of these items by consent, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't get that we had a motion.
I didn't hear that either.
Motion to accept the consent.
And I'll second it.
Revote.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept the secondary consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Roger. All right, now we're going to look at item 38, and that'll be the last item that we'll vote as consent. All right, do I have a motion for item 38 to vote as a consent item?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I will not be voting on this item.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we're going to start with item 36, and before I start, I just wanted to have a quick discussion with the audience about protocol for this meeting so we can make sure we're in order and we have a chance to hear all the comments and can address them appropriately. We're going to have an opportunity for each of you to speak. We're going to have the time, it's two minutes per person speaking, and you'll see on the screens that time is being monitored for each person speaking. We ask that you not excessively repeat what other people are saying. We're pretty smart up here and that we, when we hear it, we understand it, so please communicate briefly if you have concerns, let us know that, but please don't repeat things multiple times. Also, once the applicant, well, once the hearing part, or not hearing, the public discussion part is over, please don't raise your hand in the audience. That'll be the end of the speaking. After that will be the applicant will speak. We'll have discussion from the applicant, and then that portion will be shut, cut off, and then we'll have a motion from the commission, a second, then we'll have discussion. And we don't, at that point, want discussion back and forth from the commission. If the commission has questions they want to ask of the applicant, please direct that to me and we'll decide whether or not we want to have that question addressed. So hopefully that will help kind of control the meeting and make sure we're all listening, hearing what's going on. All right, well, let's start with item 36.
Mr. Chairman, we are, the City of Franklin is the applicant on this particular item, and this item is a request for rezoning from HI, High Heavy Industrial, to LI, Light Industrial, for the Alpha Beta region. This has, was brought to us by Alderman Skinner in reference to some nuisance uses that were taking place in the Alpha Beta area because of heavy industrial and primarily because of a concrete plant that had been sited there that will be allowed to be sited there. However, Alderman Skinner did not want to see future heavy industrial uses in this area because of proximity to residential areas. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning onto the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay, thank you. All right, this, at this point, I'll open it up for the audience to come forward. If you would, come over to the podium, and everybody, if you can line up so we can keep the discussion rolling. When you come up to the front, please tell us your name, where you live, and keep your comments to two minutes, like I said earlier, and we'll get that started.
My name is Mike Skinner. I live at 258 Sontag Drive, and I also happen to represent the Third Ward for the City of Franklin. I've requested that the city consider this and you consider this zoning from heavy industrial to light industrial. Because over the past four years, one thing I've learned is that the city has almost no control over emissions from heavy industrial-type locations. But one thing we do have is the ability to zone where these can't be a nuisance for adjacent neighborhoods. If we do, if you agree to downzone this to light industrial, there are actually 13 additional uses that are allowed under light industrial that are not allowed in heavy industrial. And all those uses are more compatible with neighborhoods and local business that support these neighborhoods than heavy industrial would be. This heavy industrial zoning probably occurred almost 20 years ago when we weren't even near the city limits then. But now we have adjacent residential properties, and I think it's important to help stabilize those and to make those sustainable to where we have property values that are sustained. Also, with shadow green on the other side of, that I understand they're making additional plans for that. We'll have more apartments and townhouses over there. So this area will virtually be surrounded by residential area. And this is a good way to help stabilize those areas and make those a good productive zoning for the City of Franklin. Oh, I'd like to ask everybody that's here in support of this light zoning from both Sullivan Farms or Polk Place if they'd stand up to indicate. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Dirksen. I live at 160 Polk Place Drive. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Polk Place Community Association, as well as the President of that board. Like to echo what Alderman Skinner had to say, that's the board's position, that we're in favor of this rezoning, mainly to keep some of the heavy industrial out and the problems that it potentially causes for the neighborhood that is now so close to that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Karen Carter. I live at 107 Tiffany Court in Polk Place. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for taking time to let our voices be heard tonight and for your consideration for us to bring forward this process of rezoning this that Mike brought forward to the board. So we thank you for your time and your consideration of this. I'd like to ask that the Planning Commission keep in mind that a zoning change like this makes for a healthy environment for us to live in. If we can change these things now, today, I don't want to repeat the comments, Mike, to respect your opinion, I don't want to repeat the comments that Mike said, but we already have issues with things that pollute our air very close to us that have been there for 20, 25 years. We can't change them today, retrospect, but we can change what goes forward in the future that we have cleaner air to breathe. And we do ask that you please consider this. Residents are growing up all around this community, and it is a residential area now versus a commercial area, and we kind of live in joint conjunction, hand in hand, with our neighbors. And so we hope that this light change will be considered, and we think it might actually improve the value for the owners of that property in the future. There are also owners that are on Alpha Drive that aren't represented here tonight, and tenants that rent property. That South Franklin Animal Clinic is a vet and a zoning, and I will also comment for that particular owner. She would gladly see the change and has also voiced that to me, so I'll speak for Cheryl Sammons, Dr. Sammons, at that point. She's positive about that change and would think that light zoning and light industrial would make that a better neighbor for her, as well as being a business member on that particular street. So I would encourage you for your thoughts and ask for your approval in this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Howard Luardis. I represent 100 Beta Drive. I'm not for this rezoning. The businesses there, or, I'm sorry, the heavy industrials are 25 years before Polk Place ever existed. We've been there a long time. The fact of the matter is every business there will be grandfathered in. There's not going to be any change, period. There is going to be a change, although those businesses are still going to operate and they are heavy industrial, they are cement, cement plants, things that you don't like. It's not going to change one bit. Also, another thing is it's going to be devaluing the property, supply and demand. If you decrease the amount of heavy industrial, that which remains is going to be worth more. That which has been changed is going to be devalued, and that's a problem for the owners. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Chance. We live at 171 Blue Bell Way in Sullivan Farms. We moved here two years ago and were really surprised to find that at least one day a week, the air outside isn't fit to breathe. And if this ordinance would, this rezoning would prevent that from happening with new heavy industrial companies coming in, it would be a real blessing for the community. And I think nothing dries down your property values like bad air, so we just need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we'll close that portion of the discussion. Is there someone that wants to discuss this on behalf of the city?
The city is the applicant. We sort of presented our viewpoint that staff is recommending approval of this, that light industrial does carry some additional opportunities for people in light industrial areas such as offices, that they cannot have in a heavy industrial area, and staff believes that it meets well with our land use plan and that it's an appropriate zoning for this area.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then I will entertain a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Moving to seconded. Discussion, any discussion? No discussion? All right, then we'll vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll move to item number 37. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The applicant is requesting six modifications of standards with this concept plan. So I'm going to go through each one of them with staff recommendations and modification of standards first.
Okay.
The first modification of standards request is to modify the required formal open space from the required 5% to 1.3%. Currently, the Alexander Plaza Shopping Center does not have any formal open space. While the site's limited in the remaining area that they could contribute to formal open space, the intent of the city's open space standards could still be achieved. It's staff's opinion that the use, design, function, and area of formal open spaces have not been maximized with the proposed concept plan. In an effort to increase the amount of formal open space onsite, the applicant has agreed to increase the size of the formal open space along the Kroger storefront to 2,500 square feet to meet that minimum requirement, and also to include an additional formal open space in the area just south of the previous La Hacienda space.
If you could say, the changes from the things that we had before tonight, you've just named one of them, right? If you could emphasize those, that would be helpful because I'm just trying to read through this.
Sure, that's the first change.
Okay.
Also, that's the main change to the formal open space. We're also, staff's still requesting that the applicant provide more detail regarding the use and function of the open space so that we can ensure that there's still usable quality to the formal open space when the post-PC concept plan comes back to us. So at this time, staff's recommending approval of this modification of standards request with conditions eight, nine, 11, and 13. And that's condition 13 as revised in the staff report revision. So also, moving on, another comment we'd like to make about the formal open space, this is not part of the modification of standards request, but staff also has a condition of approval. We're recommending that the central formal open space be moved west to realign with the drive-out entering the shopping center from Mersesboro Road and Center Point Place intersection for the purposes of the visual appeal and safer traffic circulation so that it wouldn't be a three-way stop. You just have a two-way stop there. There's so much, there's such little green space on the site already, and that open space is hidden behind the bank. We think by shifting it to the west and making it terminate at that intersection or where you come into the site there, you could actually see the green space and it would increase the quality of providing that formal open space instead of hiding it behind another building. So staff is recommending that condition of approval remain. It's staff, staff's understanding from a meeting today that the applicant does not agree with that condition of approval.
What condition number is that?
That's condition number 10.
10, okay, thank you. All right.
As for the second modification of standards, this was revised in the staff report revision today. This modification of standards request is no longer applicable. It's regarding the maximum light pole height. The applicants agreed to use 30-foot tall light poles, which meets the zoning ordinance requirement. The third modification of standards request has also been modified to modify the maximum light level from 10-foot candles to 15-foot candles, and staff is recommending approval of this modification of standards request. And that was also in the staff report revision from today.
But now, at the boundaries, it would still be?
It would still meet the ordinance, yes. The applicant is requesting a fourth modification of standards to not provide 17 required landscape islands in the parking area in front of the proposed Kroger. As you know, they're required every 12 parking spaces. Staff is recommending disapproval of this modification of standards request because we think that the applicant could design the site in a way to accommodate some more of these landscape islands, as well as more parking spaces by either using compact parking or by providing some employee parking behind the building. Currently, the parking spaces directly in front of the Kroger are 10 feet wide, which the Franklin standard is 9 feet by 18 feet. So currently, our recommendation for this modification of standards request is disapproval. If Planning Commission does decide to grant this modification of standards, staff recommends that previous parking be required for the spaces adjacent to landscape islands and the other areas of the parking lot so that at least the trees that are provided in those landscape islands could grow to a larger size due to the infiltration that could be allowed around those landscape islands.
Okay.
The fifth modification of standards request is to not provide the minimum 8-foot-wide landscapes, landscape island that is required every four parking days for large parking lots. Staff recommends approval of this modification of standards request. We think that since the site is limited in space, that their space is better served meeting some of these other more important features.
Okay.
The sixth modification of standards is regarding parking space and canopy tree separation. This is basically associated with the landscape island that's required for every 12 parking spaces, so you have to have a tree 60 feet within every parking, or located a distance of 60 feet from every parking space. Since staff's recommended disapproval of the landscape island modification of standards, we're also recommending disapproval for this request. If Planning Commission approves, if Planning Commission approves the fourth modification of standards regarding the landscape islands, this one, by default, is also approved. And if that happens, staff would recommend that a contribution to the tree bank be required for the trees that would have been required in these islands. The final modification of standards request would be to provide only a single row of shrubs along a portion of the western property line where a double-staggered row of shrubs would be required for screening. Staff recommends approval of this modification of standards request due to width constraints in that area. Staff recommends approval of the concept plan with conditions. We're happy to take questions during the rest of the time. I know that was a lot.
All right, great, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this project? Other than the applicant, I should say.
Good evening. I'm Lance Malashevsky. I live at 212 Tippett Hollow Court in the Royal Oaks subdivision in Franklin. And I guess we've had a neighborhood meeting, so to speak, but we had an awful lot of unanswered questions that happened as a result of that meeting, and it just seemed odd that the neighborhood meeting portion was satisfied according to what I see with some unanswered questions. We hadn't had the opportunity to discuss several things. There was a neighborhood concern with what was going to happen with the traffic light, but I guess that's a dead issue now.
Is it not a part, it's just not a part of this? It's not resolved, right? Is that the way to say it?
Yeah, it's an engineering issue, not a planning commission issue.
Gotcha, so that's, has nothing to do with this. And I'm not sure if it goes along with this or not, but currently there's dumpsters that are for barbecuty that we had asked to have addressed. I don't know if this dumpster enclosure, is that what I'm seeing? Is that what that's for?
Actually, the barbecuty dumpster enclosures, we've recommended that those be screened as part of this plan.
And where, is that where they're going to go, though?
That's not a part of this plan.
I'm sorry?
That would be for a later plan. That would be a site plan issue, not a concept plan issue. But they'll have to be screened. The location is probably to be determined.
Okay. And then I guess probably one of the biggest concerns we have is, you know, this just seems like a good opportune time to address the McDonald's issue, and I hope that there's some forethought that goes into this whole proposal to be able to close the access from McDonald's to Royal Oaks and open it to this, I don't know what the name of that street is, but, you know, right now there's a gravel lot there that I guess McDonald owns, and I'm hoping that there's been some communication between the owners. We didn't have the opportunity to ask the owner that at the meeting since there was nobody there.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Any other discussion? Or is there anyone representing the applicant?
Good evening. I'm Randy Perry with Perry Engineering. Thank you for your time this evening. What we're bringing before you is a plan to improve Alexander Plaza. Part of that plan would be to construct a new Kroger grocery store and fuel center. Some of the existing buildings would be torn down, the commercial building at the southwest corner, and a lot of green space would be added. We are in agreement with staff comments except for the ones that Emily had mentioned, and I'd like to touch on those now. There is modifications of standard four and six that are tied together, and then number one, which addresses formal open space and the location of formal open space. And we have agreed to enhance the formal open space, improve the front of the store, to add some in the southeast corner. The, a little history behind the project, as you guys know, it's The, a little history behind the project, as you guys know, it's a site that has no green space in it now. It's just a sea of asphalt, for a better term. There is some green around Zaxby's, but the remainder of the center is just paved, and even the stripes are faded. What we plan on is adding about 50 new green landscape islands. We are short of the minimum, and the reason is, the, I don't know if you can see the pointer, but the bank property encroaches deep into the center of this, what would be a nice rectangle. It prevents an adequate parking field in front of Kroger. The parking count now onsite in front of Kroger is below what Kroger Corporate requires as a minimum per their prototypical stores, and we know that this is, this is not a prototypical store. In fact, the store has actually been shrunk front to back in order to fit this site. Parking is at a premium. The parking spaces themselves are 10 feet by 20. It's very important to Kroger and the operation of the grocery store. We shop at Kroger, we have an SUV. It's, it's a lot easier to park, from my personal experience, our car in a wider space. It's important to Kroger. They've gotten feedback. They have 1,000 stores plus. The customers like the wider spaces. That is the main reason why we have left the parking field directly in front of Kroger free of the landscape islands. The, we have, we have reduced the, the parking spaces out at the fuel center to nine by 18s. The rest of the parking spaces over the remainder of the site are nine by 18, and keep in mind, this is an improvement over the whole entire shopping center, not just for the Kroger store. That really addresses modifications four and six, the one island every 12 spaces. We are about 16 short. We could add those spaces around the fuel center, which would make us 12 islands short, and we would request that we be approved without having those 12 islands right directly in front of the Kroger store, for the reasons that I just mentioned. The, the pervious area, if you were to approve that, elimination of those islands is 1,600 square feet per island is a big number. A parking space itself is only 162 square feet. We'd like that, that number, if we had to do pervious pavers, to be reduced to the size of the parking space, which would be the size of the island. But 1,600 square feet is a large expanse of pavement, and if you've tried to push your loaded shopping cart over that type of pavement, it gets a little rough. We're not opposed to doing the pavers, but the area, we would require that it be reduced down to 162 per missing island. Formal open space is item one, and the formal open space is centrally located over the entire shopping center. It's not just formal open space for Kroger. It does serve the entire shopping center. And we are adding some at the barbecuedy. We're going to add some at the southeast corner. We're going to add some in front of the store, but shifting that island in the center to the west, again, eclipses nine to 18 parking spaces that are in line with one of the main entrances. There are two entrances on this store, and that's a key element to the operations for Kroger. Normally, we wouldn't have a problem with that in those spaces, but in this case, as I have laid out, is, the parking is at a premium. The space dimensions are important to Kroger, and so we would request that condition 10 also be removed. The rest of the conditions, we're fine with, and we'll work with staff on the formal open space. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. All right, do I have a motion? And then we'll deal with the modifications one by one after we get the main motion. Move for approval? Okay.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Let's start with modification one, if we can, just go down the list. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask, maybe I didn't understand this. I thought whenever the discussion came up on modification one, that, that it was stated that the applicant agrees with the 2,500 square feet in front of Kroger?
That was our understanding from the meeting today.
This is on the, the island in the, in the parking lot behind the bank, pointing to it on the far wall. That's the larger, this island is the, the staff would like it shifted to the west.
Well, I understand that, but I, so, but I thought the 2,500?
We're in agreement, but they agreed to increase the amount in front of the actual property.
Oh, just increase the amount, but not add extra parking? Just make them bigger, is that it?
Just enhance it in front of the store. And I will add that, can I make another comment now that the motion?
Yeah, real quick, please.
Is that the, the three-way stop that would be a result of not shifting the island? We have added two stop bars. We'd be happy to add a third. It would be a three-way stop. As, right now, there's nothing out there. It would be an improvement.
Okay, all right. Well, let's start with modification number one, requested the formal open space. It sounds like the applicant would desire not to have condition 10 as part of that, otherwise is in agreement?
Condition 10 is not part of the modification request. That's a separate condition.
Okay.
So, condition 10 would have to be considered lighter down the list.
Let's deal with that separately then, if we want, okay.
What you've done so far is you've made, you've, you've made a motion, and it's seconded, to approve it with all of staff comments. And I think if, as, as the commission is thinking, if you want to change something, let's take one modification at a time. So, if anybody isn't in approval with what staff has drafted, then you would need to make an amendment to the motion for the modification of standard number one, if that's what you want to do. Otherwise, you've approved it based on staff's recommendation. So, you don't have to take them one at a time unless you want to make a change.
But it's very difficult, since we just got the material tonight?
I completely agree with you.
And had not really had a chance to read it before we came?
I completely agree with you.
And the result of that was that we met with the applicant today, and this was a hurry up ahead of situation. But still, this is pretty complicated, and it's even more complicated than it was whenever we had the material ahead of, ahead of time. That is my point.
Yeah, and you don't have to make a decision tonight. I mean, this isn't a final plan, it's a resolution for a concept plan. So, if you wanted to defer it, that's a proper motion as well.
To defer the modification of standards?
To defer the resolution, including the whole thing. I mean, if you don't have enough time, you need to make a decision based on, you know, review and thought.
I just want to understand it.
All right, then, do we want to, you want to go through this one by one? Is that what I mean?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that then. Let's start with modification one, formal open spaces. I understand then the applicant is in agreement with this, with, with not having the modification. Is that correct?
Correct. The applicant is in agreement with condition, with this modification of standards request and conditions eight, nine, 11, and 13 as revised.
Correct.
This is, this lowers the overall amount of formal open space that's required onsite. That's what modification one is, and they agree with those conditions.
So, wait, let's look and then see what these are. So, eight, nine, and 11 stay the same as the staff has requested? 13 is revised?
13 is revised to actually include a formal open space to the south of the previous La Hacienda site, which is that southeastern commercial strip over there, as he's pointing to.
We've agreed to add more from what's on the plan.
Right. So, previously, staff just wanted to meet with applicant about it. The condition now states that they will actually add a space there, and that they'll work with staff on, on that space.
So, basically, four and six is where the, where we still have disagreement, correct?
Correct.
Correct, and condition number 10, which is not as part of a modification anymore.
Okay, so, is there any other discussion on this first modification? Do we understand that? What we're, as part of the main motion we're voting on?
So, the, we are agreeing that, that we will take the lower number of, not lower number, but the, the lower amount of landscape.
That's correct.
Okay.
Plus, the area of the pervious pavers is 1,600.
That's not actually part of this.
That's not part of one.
That's not. Can we address that, staff? We're happy to do that.
And that's part of a different modification of standards request. This is just number one, the formal open space.
My fault. You're right. I'm on four.
This is number four, is that it? Is that part of four?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the new additional formal open space area will be a minimum 2,500 square feet, same as the others, is what we're hearing.
Yes. So, actually, the number of formal open space will probably be more than 10,000. Once we add those additional areas and that one gets bumped up to 2,500, it'll be more than this, which is why we're recommending approval now, but since that's the number we have in front of us, we're recommending approval as, as requested.
This is indeed much better than what's out there now. We understand that.
And I think it's always a challenge with a project of this size to create usable formal open space, so I think they've, they've done a good job of doing that. All right, and?
But now, does it also, where's the moving to the west? Is that in here?
That's condition number 10, which we're going to take totally separately.
Let's do that at the end here.
Okay. I just, as I say.
I'm saying, if we take a little time, maybe we can.
It was kind of, it was very complicated before the changes that we see tonight.
Okay, let's move on to number two.
So, wait, are we, are we agreeing to modification standard one, or do we need to have a motion stating that?
You've already approved it with the main motion. The only thing you would need to do is make an amendment if you didn't agree with staff commenting. Because you've approved with conditions. The motion is to approve with conditions the resolution as it stands. If you want to make?
The new one.
Yes, the new updated one. If you want to make a change, then let's make an amendment.
So, one's okay.
Okay, so, we ready to move to two?
Yes.
Two was eliminated, as I understand, because they agreed to the 30-foot poles?
Exactly.
Any question on that? No? Okay. Number three is the maximum light foot candles, 15-foot candles. Instead of 10 is what's typically required?
In the interior, in the interior.
In the interior of the site.
Okay.
Wouldn't be on the boundaries.
Okay.
So, they, staff has approved of that, and that's part of the, the new conditions. Any other discussion on that?
Which condition is that?
Number three.
Three.
Okay. Okay. And number four is the landscape islands, and that's where the applicant is requesting to keep the modification of standard as staff has recommended disapproval. So, do we want to discuss that at all, or keep that on the, that's, again, part of the main motion?
I'd like to discuss, but go ahead, somebody else.
Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this, the reason I think that the applicant is saying that they do not agree with this, which is directly tied to four, is because Kroger generally has a 10-foot wide parking space, and the city only requires nine foot. Well, you already know where I'm going with this. Absolutely love the 10 feet, okay? Really and truly visually, I mean, I'm all for aesthetics, but I'm also for, for ease of use, and I hate nothing more than going to a, the reason we get so many door deans in these parking spaces is because everybody has SUVs except for me, and you can't get a parking, you know, unless you're a man who wants to lug water to your car. I like to be able to put my buggy beside my car and unload it. And I know it sounds, you know, like, well, that, but it, that extra foot makes a big difference. And to be honest with you, I'm all for trees and all that, but I got plenty on my, at my house. When I go to the parking, when I go shopping, I want convenience. And I'll be honest with you, I'd, I'd love to, to have a 10-foot wide parking spot and give up 12 trees or 12 islands, so, that's where I stand, selfish though it is.
Can I ask the applicant on that issue? Are you restriping the lot where they're all 10 feet?
We're going to overlay it and restripe. Yes, sir.
And every space will be 10 feet?
In front of the store, they'll all be 10 feet wide. At the fuel center, and for the remainder of the shopping center to the east, they'll be nine by 18s. But in front of the store, 10 by 20 specifically because it's a grocery use, and people don't always load from the back of the car.
I, I would like to ask the applicant, did you say you could add some in, of the landscape islands back to the fuel center area?
We could. There's a string here, and there's a string here, and there's a string here, so we could add three here, and then there's two, four, six, eight, 10, 11, 12. The rest, the rest, then, if we added three here, you would have an island every 12 spaces.
So, maybe if they could add a couple more to the fuel center area?
We're happy to do that.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
I mean, I personally would much rather see you go to a nine-and-a-half foot space, and let's take the difference and put those landscape islands back in, where you kind of somehow meet in the middle. I mean, I, I think that those trees in the parking lots are, are important. You know, even if you did every other bay, we could pick up a landscape island, landscape area. If there's somewhere we could meet in the middle, especially on this very large parking lot, that today is not exposed to the road because of the existing buildings that are there, but as soon as we take all the buildings away, now we're opening that, that parking lot back up to the public. It'd be nice to have a little bit more tree canopy added into that area as a result. I personally can't support number four as it sits today.
The problem with that is at half-foot, the math won't add up. You won't get an island that's wide enough to meet.
But I'd be, I mean, we'd be willing to, if it was eight foot wide, I mean, you could still get a tree in there, and with 17 spaces, I mean, there's a way, if we took off half a foot from each one of those spaces, we're going to come up with about eight foot in order to make that, that tree island work. I mean, I'd much rather see us be negotiating something like that and the size of this, of the islands, as opposed to whether or not those islands even exist.
It's an important issue with Kroger, that width. I can't over, I can't overstate it. We are, I don't know which one you can see, but we are adding a whole, a continuous landscape island on this west side and to the west of the fuel center, and then there's a whole row of new islands here, plus the islands at the fuel center. So, not having the islands in the middle, there is going to be screening once the, the retail building is down and the fuel center is up. It will be heavily landscaped, and not having those on the interior, you would not know that from the highway.
Hey, Greg, I would ask if you, if you want to forward a motion to that effect. I, I don't want to get into a negotiation between the commission and the applicants on these items, but I would definitely entertain a motion.
Because right now, what you're doing is you'll make the motion as you made it. It's for the staff recommendation of disapproval of that.
Well, I'd like to make an amendment to number four, landscape islands, that we disapprove MOS four, modification four. Is, or is it already four?
You're already doing that.
Because that's staff recommendation.
That's the staff recommendation. The only thing you would do is if you?
I could reduce the square footage that would be required by the zoning ordinance for those landscape islands, to give them some relief on still providing the landscape islands, but meeting their 10-foot requirements.
Which is the amendment I would like to offer, because as it stands now, they'll have to build nine-foot wide with, if we approve what is before us, they would have to build a nine-by, the too narrow, in my opinion, nine-foot wide parking spaces to allow for more trees, okay? So, so if nothing happens, that's what we'll do. I would like to offer, I'd like to offer an amendment to that, to allow this applicant in front of the store to construct 10-foot wide parking spaces. And to also, around the fuel center, in order to make up for some of those islands that would be lost, to construct those extra three or however many, I'm sorry, number of islands around the, the fuel center to help offset the number that would not be allowed because of the 10-foot wide parking spaces in front of the store. I know that was rambling, I'll get it a little more concise.
When you say store, you mean Kroger?
Kroger, yes. In front of the grocery store, to allow the 10-foot wide parking spaces that the applicant has requested.
Marcia, before I try to get a second, I want to make sure Greg was sort of in the middle of a motion, and I don't want to?
Okay.
Don't want to give Greg the opportunity to extend his motion if he was doing a motion.
I'm sorry.
If not, then I will entertain your motion.
The current required width for the landscape islands, is it 10 feet? Or is it based on a certain square footage?
Give me one second. It's eight feet in width and 250 square feet per planted tree.
Back a curb, back a curb. Nine feet.
Right.
Or if you have an elbow, even wider.
Out to out, it's nine feet.
Okay. But you want to extend the motion, Greg?
Oh, I was just going to ask one more question, unless you're ready to make the motion.
Okay, well, hold on, I've got two motions sort of hanging out here. Let me address those first, and then?
I don't think so. I don't think, I mean, eight foot, I think, is as narrow as we'd want to go on that, and after hearing Marcia's motion, I think that's something I could probably support as well.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on. Hold on, hold on one second. Keep this in order here. So Marcia, do you want to continue that motion?
Yes, I do.
All right, then I will entertain a second to that motion. Okay, moved to second, and now we can discuss. Alma?
So what are the risks in the local Krogers in this area? Are they 10 feet?
The parking.
Yes, ma'am.
The one down the road, plus the one over in Independence Square.
I'm sure that they are. Kroger's with us, so I'm confirming.
Okay. All right, Ms. Peterson?
How, I'll ask the staff this. How have recent grocery stores handled this? Have they gone with the nine by 18 or the 10 by 20? Because we've had, I know, at least Whole Foods.
Harris Teeter.
And Harris Teeter, both in recent years. Have they just gone with the nine by 18, or?
To be honest, I'm not sure. I can't, I can't recall. We do allow people to exceed the nine foots a minimum, so.
That wouldn't have necessarily been a problem if they had fitted all the number of parking spaces in that they wanted.
No one has asked for a modification like this, to my knowledge, ever.
It's technically not that they want to build this 10 feet. The modification is that, that's right, because they want to put a certain number of spaces in at this particular.
That's correct.
They can't provide both.
They can't, they cannot get the number of spaces they want.
Right.
And also the width that you want.
Right.
Is, is there, what is our minimum, maximum own number of spaces based on this square footage of a building?
3.33 per thousand, and then you get a 20% increase.
So how do you work?
It's about four.
How does it work on that? I mean, your numbers.
We meet the, we meet the ordinance for the required parking spaces. The limitations on this plan are the bank property limits the depth of the parking field for Kroger. And so the corporate's minimum ratio is much greater than what we already have with this plan. It's, it's, Bobby had to go to corporate specifically to get this plan approved with this few number of spaces in front of the store, but was successful.
But I may be asking, what's the difference? I mean, you know, the things that your company required versus what we require?
Right, and that's, we're bringing a plan with the hopes of improving the entire center.
Well, no, I'm asking about the part, number of parking spaces. I mean, I understand that, but I'm specifically asking about the number of parking places, because we have a minimum and then a max on this 20% more than that. How does that fit in with what Kroger Corporate would expect here?
Good evening. My name's Bobby Capers. I'm the engineering manager for Kroger in the southeast region. Handle a lot of the southeast projects. To answer your question, our corporate standard's five per thousand. Right now, we're at four per thousand. And as Randy said, it was on the fence with our company because parking is important to us to be able to get a plan that we could live with internally, even get corporate to let us proceed with this project before you today.
But they do meet minimum, this plan does meet minimum parking.
What I mean, does it, does it exceed the maximum, though?
No.
But would the five per thousand exceed the maximum that we allow?
It's possible.
I think your maximum's four.
That's their plan, that.
Yours is four.
That's their requirement. Is that the maximum?
It has nothing to do with that.
The maximum for us is 120% of the minimum.
And the minimum is what, per thousand?
3.33.
3.33. When it's applied for such a large site, it's not just applied for the Kroger store, but everything. It's difficult to.
And again, we're just asking to increase the spots right in front of the store.
Isn't it?
Everything else is nine by eighteen.
Our maximum is really four, but generally, on a big site, that wouldn't matter because there's some other uses that wouldn't require the, you know.
Right.
And again, if we had a blank canvas, we would certainly be able to meet y'all's requirements, but we don't have a blank canvasser.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion?
No, well, wait. You're putting in, though, the fuel station. If you didn't do that, you'd have enough, wouldn't you? I mean, I'm just asking. Wouldn't you have enough?
Our corporate standard right now is not build a new store without a fuel center.
Okay, any other discussion?
So what's our motion now, then?
We're amending the main motion that we approve adding three new islands at the fuel center and approve their modification of standards otherwise. Is that pretty much it?
Yes.
Okay. So any other discussion on that amendment to the motion?
Okay, the other part of it is, what about the pervious parking? That's also a part of modification standard four.
That's part of, well, that's what, that was part of my motion.
Your motion was to construct 10-foot wide.
Thank you.
Parking spaces in front of the store, and then add the three islands of the fuel center. There's nothing about, so if you want that, let's.
Which was nothing about what? Say that again.
Nothing about the pervious pavement. You didn't add that in.
So in other words, that would still be in here, right?
That would still be in here unless it was removed.
Okay, so we're seeing, okay, now, let me back up. Because I thought my motion addressed number four and six, because four and six go hand in hand, if I'm not mistaken. Because if we allow them, the modification of standard on four, it takes care of six. So they're not, they're actually intertwined. Correct? Is that not what you said, Emily?
Correct, but they're not the same thing. They probably need to be.
Handled separately.
Handled separately.
I'll leave you alone then, I'm done.
Okay.
But, okay, so then, the part of the modification, you're not just saying delete modification standard four, you were just changing it to those things that.
I think the motion should probably be, if you're going to grant this modification of standards, it needs to deal with the landscape islands and not the parking size, because that's the actual standard.
Which takes care of that.
Right. So that would be the side product of.
So I need to reword my motion. So do I need to withdraw the motion that I made? Because I.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And you will need to speak to the 1,600 square feet for each landscape island of impervious material, or pervious, I'm sorry.
Which is not part of number four. So let's see where to get that.
Is this on the next page?
Okay, there we are.
If the planning commission's in favor of granting this, a motion could be to grant the applicant's request for modification of standards with the addition of the area of pervious pavement, as indicated in the staff report.
Okay.
And the three islands.
I withdraw my.
And the three islands.
And the three islands.
I withdraw my previous motion.
Okay. Michael, you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I've moved that. We approved the modification of standards from the applicant concerning the construction of the islands, of the islands. And that it also include the staff notes concerning the.
Pervious.
Pervious pavement, pavement. And also to include the construction of three islands around the fuel center. Does that cover, did I cover it up?
Three landscape islands.
Three landscape islands, I'm sorry, that are around the fuel center.
Okay. That sounds like a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I get a clarification on, are we including the requirement for 1,600 square feet of pervious pavement per missing island? Or are we reducing that number?
Around the islands that we're going to be provided, that you were already providing with this plan as you've shown.
1,600 square feet per island, per, times 12.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Be 1,600 times nine.
Not, not.
Was that the total? Was that the total for all?
That's a 19,000 square feet of impervious, of pervious pavers.
It's a half acre.
That seems like a lot.
A ton.
You're just trying to provide more.
I think the staff report is wrong.
Right.
What, do we have a landscape person here that can?
It's actually.
It needs to be.
It's probably not wise to do the figuring on the full condition for that. If it's something that we can provide, if there can be additional pervious pavement provided to allow for additional infiltration, I think that would be better than what was shown.
We're happy to comply with that. Our suggestion would be to replace an island with pervious pavement.
No way.
The same area.
Oh, wait just a minute. Oh, do you mean the island that would have been there, the 12? Is that it?
Right, we take that area, and we turn into pervious pavement, and we move it down adjacent to the actual landscape.
Well, that doesn't really, our purpose in this would be that since trees aren't being provided in the, in the center of the parking lot, that we would want the trees that are being provided around the perimeter of the parking lot to grow to a larger size by having more infiltration into those islands.
But I think that's what you were saying.
We're happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that's what he's saying.
I think, I think that's what he's saying. So in other words, the pervious pavement would be around the islands that are going to be built.
Correct. That's right.
Okay, I thought you were talking about parking spaces in the.
No.
He just means the map.
Right.
Okay.
Gotcha.
So you can omit the amount that's in here.
Just say that it's going to be, that the pervious pavers, what you said, I guess.
I said, I didn't say the amount. I didn't say 16. But in the staff, but in comments, it says 1,600. So.
Well, it says should be. Your motion was to approve this modification of standard, number four.
Right.
But include the pervious pavement, pavement, and add three additional islands around the fuel center. That was what your motion was for. And this last sentence, the area of pervious pavement should be 1,600 square feet. Is it a recommendation? I mean, it's just something that staffs said. So I'm not sure that you have to go with that. You didn't make that in your motion.
We're happy to work with the applicant on that.
Please, we appreciate it.
Best part of the thought is that it would, area-wise, replace, but in the area of the proposed by you islands.
And normally, we wouldn't bring this up in this forum, but I missed it on that page. So it was important to bring it up. I apologize for that.
So my motion stands up, we're fine with it.
Okay, well, let's, let's either discuss more, or let's vote on this motion. Are we, any more discussion? All right, seeing none.
Chairman, will you recap this, and we all?
Yeah, I need to make sure it's clear.
I'll do my best.
I can do it.
The, as I understand the motion, we are approving the modification of standards with the exception of adding three islands at the fuel center that are landscape islands, and providing sufficient pervious pavement around the existing islands to allow the trees to blossom and grow larger at some point in their lives.
That is right.
Is that complete? Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Except I would say the, the proposed islands, not the existing, because they're not out there now.
Proposed and existing, right. No, there are no existing, okay. All right, all in favor of the amendment to the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The main motion, or just to?
To the modification.
I'm just the amendment to modification four.
Yeah.
Not as modification four.
Okay, all right. Amendment to the modification four. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right. Then modification five, I understand staff has an approval, approval with that. Is that okay with everybody here?
Yes.
Okay, then let's move to item six, which is interconnected with all we just discussed. And I think if we disagree with this, or I guess in our first discussion or our first vote, we voted against this, basically. But the condition was requested to add a contribution to the tree bank if we decided to disallow that.
That is modification of standard six, isn't it?
Right.
Just to request the contribution of the city tree bank for the missing.
Yeah, so.
You would need to make a motion to approve the applicant's.
Yeah, because there's no comments that you guys have made that I've seen in writing that says that, correct?
No.
You just said that tonight, but there wasn't, any of your comments didn't say that.
Right.
Is that right?
It's in the comments.
It's written on page five.
It's not included in the revisions.
It's in the original.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
But if you want to, since you granted the other request, this one will need to be granted as well, but with a condition to, if the planning commission would like for them to make a contribution to the tree bank.
I agree.
You want to do it again?
Yes.
All right.
I moved that we approve modification of standard number six with the added condition that a contribution, in lieu of trees will be planted on the site, that a contribution, contribution be made to the city's tree fund.
Bank.
Bank.
Second.
Okay, moved to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item seven, I understand that staff was approving of that as well, so any discussion on that one? All right, then we move to condition 10 that's in question. And I believe the applicant desires to remove item 10, or condition 10 from the approval. Does anybody want to extend a motion that would do that? That's shifting that linear open space where the hand is, where the hand is going aggressively up and down. All right, I see none?
I see it.
All right, then let's move on. We're back to the main motion.
I will, I will say, I would move, I would move to remove condition 10.
Okay.
I think it's going to be difficult for them to do this.
Okay.
And make the rest of it work.
I'll second.
Condition 10 seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Then we will move back to the main motion.
And I want to say something before we vote on that. I noticed that it stated that their, the sign is not a part of this. Is it going to be on the site plan?
The sign is a separate entity. It is part of a non-conforming use. They have to meet our signed regulations at this point in time.
So if they wish to disagree with that, at what forum does that occur?
There's really no one to appeal to unless their reason for wanting it different is topographical, something that can get you into the Board of Zoning Appeals. Your zoning ordinance stands for itself. The only other appeal past this would be probably or at assert based on our interpretation of our code. Because it's a non-conforming use, once they take it down.
Okay. applicants in the past not come to the planning commission to make a request for a change in the signs?
Only signs, I think from what I understand, it's signs that have not been created yet, like in West Haven and McEwen, signs that weren't already there. This is a sign that's already there. That's what makes it non-conforming. I think you guys have made changes to the modify, to your own standards when it comes to signs that haven't been created yet.
That would be good to research, because there may have been times whenever that was not the case, out on Highway 96 East. Those were not just new signs that had to conform, whenever, whenever use has changed. So as I say, I think that would be worthy of research.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, then we're back to the main motion. All in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, we're moving on to, unless I'm wrong, our last item, 45.
Staff recommends approval. It meets the, planning commission changed your bylaws recently to limit non-agenda items, but this is specifically one of the, a site plan extension is specifically something that can, you said could be heard. So staff recommends approval of the extension.
Okay, all right. The applicant wants to explain anymore?
Not really, just would like a site plan extension to give us time to get the building prepared.
Okay, all right.
Leave for approval.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, any motion for adjournment?
One of the, one of the, wasn't it last month that we vote Clyde Barnhill was our vice chair?
No, that was just temporarily.
That was temporarily for that one thing?
Yeah.
That's right, okay, sorry. Yes. Now one thing.
Okay.
Adjourn.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.